I'd like to call our meeting back to order, please. It's time for recognitions and awards. And Laura Lee, will you make our introductions, please?
Thank you, and I'm thrilled to see that the room has really filled up during the break. We'd like to welcome all of you, our special guests and their supporters and families, as well as our business partners this evening. And I'm going to ask Mr. Jim Smith, who's our Director of Community Development, to come forward for the business partner recognition. We'll start with the Olathe Public Schools Foundation, the board members who are here, and Mr. Scott Zerker, Executive Director of the Foundation. And all board members, please come on up this middle aisle here. Members of the Olathe Public Schools Foundation Board of Directors are joining us tonight with a big check for its annual grant to summer school. You know, we talk a lot about extended learning opportunities for students in our district, and one of the really important opportunities is summer school. However, those opportunities might not be possible for some of our students without the generosity of the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. This year, the foundation is proud to provide $50,000 for summer school scholarships for students who need them. This grant has been provided through the generous contributions of individuals, families, and companies in our community, so please help us show our appreciation to the Olathe I think she's afraid that you're taking the check away with you. Now, we would like to recognize Carrabba's Italian Grill, Mr. Eric Martino, owner, is here with us. Carrabba's is an Italian restaurant founded in Houston, Texas, in 1986, and Eric has been working for Carrabba's since he was 15. He started out as a best boy and worked through every position of the restaurant. At 20, he became a kitchen manager. He's handled a territory covering four states, he's worked in research and development, and helped open 14 Carrabba's across the country. Now, he has his own restaurant here in Olathe, where he's been the proprietor for nine months, and he says he's loved every minute of it. As a district partner, Eric has been very gracious in providing fundraising opportunities for the Nurses Care Fund and the Retired Teachers Scholarship Fund, among others. Since its opening, Carrabba's has proven to be a good community citizen, and we are pleased to welcome them as a district partner.[166.26][166.26][applause] And keep those desserts coming.
I will.[181.45][181.45][laughter]
We'd like to recognize this very special young man. A special young man with us tonight, Sunil Aier from Indian Trail Junior High with his principal. Is Tracy Marion here?
Yeah.
Well, what can we say about this guy? I think he has single-handedly taught America how to pronounce "Olathe."[209.12][209.12][laughter] He has certainly put us on the map by taking second place in the National Geographic Geography Sunil has just completed the seventh grade at Indian Trail, and he already has $15,000 in scholarship money, thanks to being second in the nation in geography out of more than five million competitors. I think he deserves another hearty round of applause.[258.02][258.02][applause] And Sunil, do you have family members here?
Um, yeah, my mom and my dad are left.
Mom, would you stand too?[281.02][281.02][applause] We'd like to recognize some Olathe South High School students, our Kansas Skills USA Contest winners, Will Dennis and Josh Betzer from Olathe South, and their principal, Mr. Phil Clark, and Dr. Gretchen Shirk, Director of Career Technical Education. Skills USA is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry working together to make sure America has a well-prepared, skilled workforce. The Skills USA competitions focus not only on workplace skills, but also on career success, citizenship, and lifelong learning. This year, Will Dennis, step forward, Will. Thank you. Olathe South Junior took first place in the safety contest based on a timed exam on general occupational safety, and Josh Betzer, also a junior at Olathe South, took first place in auto collision based on repairing a metal fender, analyzing structural damage, welding to professional standards, and completing a written exam and interview. These first-place winners advance to the Nationals, which will be held later this month in Kansas City. And do you have any family members here?
I have mom.
Mom? Pardon me? Moms, please stand or wave. Let's start with some championship teams now. The Olathe South Boys Golf Team, with Coach Kerry Hazel and Principal Phil Clark, please This has been a big year for the Olathe South Boys Golf Team. First of all, they won the Kansas 6A State Golf Championship that was held in late May at the Reflection Ridge Golf Club in Wichita. Second, two individuals from the team took individual first and second place, Jordan Smith, who was named overall golf champion, and Chase Chamberlain, who placed second individually in the state tournament. And third, Coach Kerry Hazel, who is retiring this year, has been named Golf Coach of the Year by the Kansas Coaches Association. Kerry, would you like to introduce the boys to us?[477.00][477.00][laughter]
On the end here, on your left, Scott Peck, Britt Dowd, Jacob Ure, Matt Poor, and Jordan Smith. Chase Chamberlain can't be with us tonight. I think Jordan told me his grandpa had triple bypass, and so, kind of the nature of these kids, he's with his grandpa instead of being here, so that's kind of cool. Just real quickly, another, I don't even think Jordan knows this yet, but today I got word that he was named the Kenneth Smith Award, Golf Award, which is probably the biggest golf award in the whole metropolitan area, and he's the recipient of that this year,
And do we have any family members here?
Guys, go ahead.
And my wife, Elizabeth, who is in the, about the second week of her retirement after 37 years.
Is that all? All the family members? Okay, thank you. Now, we would like to recognize the Olathe East Boys Track Team with Coach Mike Wallace and Principal Dr. Tom Berry, and from the Girls Track Team, Ashley Reed.[581.00][581.00][coughs] And is Ryan Ralston here also?
Yeah.
Olathe East AD. Okay, well, Olathe East cut a pretty wide swath at the state track meet. The East Boys Team took the 6A State Championship for the second time in the school's history. In addition, the team had four individual state champions, and I would ask you to step forward as I say your name. Dee won both the 100 and 200 meter sprints. He also won the 200 meters last year, so he'll finish his high school career with three individual state titles.[636.79][636.79][applause] Travis Tannehill defended his state championship.[647.23][647.23][applause] Travis defended his state championship in the javelin with a throw of 199 feet 6 inches. He's a junior, so he'll be back next year to try for a third straight title. Cody Frazier, Reynard Smith, Ross Palermo, and Ben Schmitz won the 4800 meter relay, breaking the eight-minute mark and the school record with a time of 7:56 11, and I understand led for virtually the entire race.[680.69][680.69][applause] And now, for the girls. Ashley Reed is just a sophomore, but she cleared the 5'6", cleared 5 feet 6 inches, that's probably taller than you are, isn't it?[700.23][700.23][laughter] To win her first state high jump title and help her team to a ninth-place overall finish.[706.13][706.13][applause] Coach, would you like to introduce the team members?
Start with our coaches, fashionably late as usual, Nathaniel Thuston, Tony Bozarth, our distance coach, Nathaniel, coaches sprinters, Ken Stoes is our hurdles coach, and our kids, Cody Billings. Cody just got back from a camping trip, therefore his attire, he usually looks very nice.[740.63][740.63][laughter] He ran on our 4x100 relay to place third. Again, Ben Schmitz placed in the Open 800 along with anchor in our 4x800 meter relay team. Cody Frazier led off with a 156.7 on our 4x8. That's about as fast as Mr. Poland ran when he was in high school.[757.32][757.32][laughter] I know better than that, because we used to race.[760.00][760.00][laughter] And then he placed sixth in the 800. Ross Palermo ran third leg, and like was mentioned earlier, he ran all by himself. Reynard Smith with the cool-looking glasses.[769.73][769.73][laughter] He ran second leg on our 4x8, ran, also qualified in the mile, and ran, then came back and placed seventh in the 800. We had three kids place in the 800 in the state meet, which is pretty cool. Bobby Phoenix, Bobby's just a freshman. He was an alderman on our 4x100 relay. Of course, Dee Bell, and what a way to end your career, 2186, best time in the state, secured our state title. Travis Tannehill's 199 6-foot inch throw is one of the, probably the top 15 throws in the country. That's quite an accomplishment. Brian Smith, Brian Smith is a shot putter. He placed eighth just out of the medals, but had a personal best of over 53 feet during the year. He's not a big kid, so that's a pretty doggone good throw. Andrew Longenecker ran second leg on our 4x1 to place third, also placed sixth in the 300 hurdles. Carl Banks ran on our 4x400 meter relay, and of course, Ashley Reed. And Ashley ran on our 4x100 meter relay that ran leadoff. They ran 4790 in the prelims with the fifth fastest time in the history of the state, and we got beat.[830.23][830.23][laughter] So, I mean, and we got beat by Leavenworth, who we see every week. So, our kids, you know, Dr. Berry and Mr. Ralston there at the state meet, I think they were just as excited as the coaches and the kids. It was awesome to have them there. Dr. Berry's a, I was going to say old, but he's a former track coach, so he knows all the things that we go through and the kids go through and the coaches go through. It was awesome that he could be there and be with us when we won our second title.
Okay, if we have parents here, would you please stand and be recognized? Or wave your hands? Oh, and Cody Banks, please wave your hand, because you didn't get to be here in the front. Now, we would like to recognize Arian Long from Olathe North with Coach Doug Catloth and Principal Dr. Connie Hynen. Okay, maybe he'll come later. Kaitlin Merrill from Olathe Northwest. Is Kaitlin here? Okay. And the Olathe East Girls Relay Team. Are they here? Okay. Kirsten Jones, Chanel Cerulis, Betsy Karst, and Brianna Winkler, and their coach, Dave Yoker, and Principal Dr. Tom Berry. And AD, Ryan Ralston.[961.36][961.36][applause] Here's another championship team. Seniors Kristen Jones and Chanel Cerulis, junior Betsy Karst, and sophomore Brianna Winkler, who won the state 6A 200 freestyle relay held in Topeka in May with a program record time of 1:40 20. And Coach, would you like to individually introduce the girls?
On behalf of all the athletes here, Ford, we appreciate you recognizing all the hard work that goes into all these athletes and champions. But from left to right, our senior Kristen Jones, who will be continuing to swim down at Missouri State, sophomore Brianna Winkler, who is going to be returning with, hopefully following in her footsteps, Chanel Cerulis, our senior, who will be swimming at University of Las Vegas, and our final one is Betsy Karst, who also has aspirations to continue, and she's a junior right now. But Dr. Berry, Dr. Ralston.[1059.67][1059.67][laughter] We do appreciate everything you guys do over at Olathe East, and thank you for all the support, and great job, ladies, on a very successful relay.[1070.17][1070.17][applause]
Okay, are there any parents here associated with these girls?
Parents, please.
Thank you. Now, we'd like to recognize Denise Griffey, Grant Facilitator for the District for the Kaufman Expeditionary Grant. Denise and Linda Penner and Deanna Trapp, neither of who could join us tonight, have co-authored a successful $85,000 professional development grant for faculty involved in the Distinguished Scholars Program at Olathe North High School. The grant lasts five years and will support student learning expeditions focused around a compelling topic. These learning expeditions are described as long-term investigations of important questions and subjects that include individual and group projects, field studies, and performances and presentations of student work. A sense of moral purpose and citizenship is also an important component of the program. Several years ago, before the turn of the century, when we asked our community what kind of education our students should have in the 21st century, this is exactly the kind of education our community described to us. We are indebted to these ladies for helping to keep the educational opportunities coming through their efforts to seek out and successfully capture this grant. And now, we invite Angie Girdes from Olathe Northwest with her principal, Dr. Gwen Poss, and Sue Poor from Heatherstone Elementary with her principal, Ken Roberts, to come The Kansas Counseling Association recognized two Olathe School District Councilors during its spring convention. Angie Girdes from Olathe Northwest High School and Sue Poor from Heatherstone Elementary were among six finalists for the KCA Counselor of the Year. In addition, Sue was named the Kansas School Counselor Association's 2006-07 Outstanding School Counselor of the Year. Sue and Angie were described by the president of the association as dedicated, hard-working listeners who are bridge builders steering others towards success in their lives. Dr. Poss says that Angie's contributions to her school community include her strengths in communication and problem-solving, she's honest, compassionate, and enthusiastic, and makes students, teachers, and parents feel that they are her first priority. Ken Roberts, who nominated Sue for her recognition, has worked with her for 29 years and said she's always trying to learn more about the latest approaches in counseling, which serves her well as the coordinator of elementary counselors and as she plans their professional development training throughout the year. Now, we invite Monica Duncan from Oregon Trail Junior High School and her principal, Steve Massey. For the past 12 years, Walmart has been recognizing outstanding teachers who are making a positive difference in the lives of young people. This year, on National Teachers Day, May 8, the honor came to Monica Duncan, who's a ninth-grade teacher at Oregon Trail Junior High School, and she was recognized as the Walmart Teacher of the Year during a surprise ceremony. Monica's principal, Steve Massey, says she does a great job of taking on leadership opportunities. For example, she stepped in and coordinated Oregon Trail's student mentoring program, finding an adult mentor for every single student who needed one, setting up activities for them, and sending out questions and topics for adults to talk to their student mentee about. And all this during her first year at Oregon Trail. She teaches applied algebra and was nominated for this award because of a student who felt like she really turned his year around. That's quite a recommendation. Now, we'd like to invite three special ladies to come forward. Jenny Schwartzbeck, the seniors serving schools, along with Darlene Small and Diane Steele, and Earl Martin, who's our Director of Elementary Level Education. This is kind of a sad or nostalgic occasion for many of us, as we honor a very special lady who has been associated with our district for many years. I think when Jenny Schwartzbeck retired from teaching in our district, she had a dream of how she and others like her could be, continue to be involved. So, as one of the original organizers of the seniorserving school, along with Dr. Banikowski, she started out with an organization of four individuals and a mission to keep the older members of our community connected to the schools, and most important, to stay connected to our community's children. It's now been about 15 years, and the organization has grown to more than 250 volunteers, with many thousands of hours of volunteer help a year. Many of the volunteers work faithfully in the schools, where their presence is felt in the individual attention given to students, the programs they present, the history they share, and the many willing hands to help with large and small projects. Others help in offices, library media centers, computer labs, and other support areas. Jenny is retiring from her organizational role, so that she and her husband, Dick, who's a seniorserving school volunteer, will have more time to travel and participate in her grandchildren's activities. But she'll still be part of the seniorserving schools as a volunteer. She does cake decorating demonstrations for family and consumer science classes and works with the TAPS program at Olathe North High School. She also sings with the seniorserving school chorus and is working with their sesquicentennial presentation. So, as you can see, fortunately, we're not losing her, but this is a good opportunity for us to stop and take the time to tell her and show her what she means to us. Now, we invite Gary Deener, Executive Director of Business and Finance, Randy Otting, Budget Analyst, and Gene Katzer, Administrative Assistant Extraordinaire, to come forward. And Gary's the one who gave me that extraordinary part. Thanks to these three hard-working individuals, the Olathe School District has earned the Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International. The Meritorious Budget Award is conferred on school systems that meet or exceed the Meritorious Budget Award Program criteria, specifically designed to enhance school budgeting and honor a school system for a job well done. The district's budget was cited for its clarity, accuracy, and accessibility of information to district patrons, and Gary says that the real trick of this job is the massive amount of organization of data that Gene contributes to the project. This is the 10th consecutive year the Olathe District has received this award, a record which is unmatched by any other district in the state. Congratulations on a job well done.[1590.63][1590.63][applause] And Randy, I didn't mean to imply that you weren't involved.[1604.13][1604.13][laughter] I think he was just trying to say that it wasn't him.[1611.13][1611.13][laughter] We would like to talk a little bit about our Greensburg tornado relief, and we'll ask Dr. Bob Hull and Eric Lacy, representing Heart to Heart, to come forward. Once again, the employees of the Olathe School District have opened their hearts and their pocketbooks to help someone in need. Even though there were only a few short weeks left in the school year at the time of the Greensburg tornado, district staff responded as they had for the victims of the tsunami and Hurricane Katrina, and donated funds to provide assistance. Dr. Bob Hull, who coordinated the fundraising effort, is here to present a check for $18,649 to Heart to Heart International, which will use the money to continue its relief efforts in Greensburg. So, congratulations to the employees of the Olathe School District on their fundraising.[1663.96][1663.96][applause] And Dr. Hull, would you stay up here, please, because now we're going to recognize Jamie Craig, Principal of Scarborough Elementary. Is Jamie here? And is your, okay, and is the rest of your building's crisis team here?
Yeah.
Okay. And Randy Smith, Principal of Clearwater Creek Elementary, and I think he brought his building crisis team with him, along with Dr. Hull, who's the head of the District Crisis Management Team. A few years ago, the district's crisis management team put together a plan to recognize those schools who are willing to take on the challenge of having their building crisis plans put under the microscope by a team of experts. Each year, the principals and their staff members who volunteer to undergo this examination are tested on their readiness and how well they've communicated the plans to staff and students, and they even go through a tabletop crisis situation to test how they perform under pressure. Tonight, we are proud to honor Scarborough Elementary and Clearwater Creek Elementary, who are being awarded the Gold Shield Award, symbolizing their achievement of solid preparation and planning to help safeguard their schools. And the members of Randy's team with him tonight are Lana Taylor, Debbie Gualtney, Rob Shipley, and Randy.[1770.04][1770.04][laughter] Thank you. And our board president, Mr. Kevin Gilmore, is going to take care of our last recognition.
Thank you, Laura Lee. Before we get to our final recognition, Dr. All, I would like you to stay here, if you wouldn't mind, for just a second. I'd like to ask Dr. Bob Hull and Dr. Ann Sanders if they would come to the front of the room, please. We have two of our distinguished administrators who are retiring from the We have two of our distinguished administrators who are retiring from the district this year, and we wanted to just take a moment. I'd like to ask our board members if you'd come down as well, please. Just take a moment to recognize you for your service. And, Dr. All, would you like to bring some comments?
Thank you. On the right is Dr. Ann Sanders, and on the left is Dr. Bob Hull. And these are two of our district leaders who have made a very key, important decision in their life, but have done it at a point in their life where they have contributed many, many valuable years of expertise and talent and service to the school district. Ann Sanders is our Director of Senior High Education. She is not totally leaving education. She is making a decision to be with Baker University, and she will be teaching in their doctoral program for future principals and district leaders, as well in their master's degree programs at Baker, which will include our teacher preparation area. I think she's also going to be doing some recruiting for them, and we hope to continue our association relationship with her. Dr. Sanders has been significant in senior high education, particularly, most recently, making sure that we drive our advanced placement opportunities for increasing in students, our Avid program, advocating for all students, making sure that there are no barriers to their learning, and providing great leadership, and she will be greatly missed. Dr. Hull has been with the... And Ann's been here for 10 years. Prior to that, she was Principal in Blue Valley. Bob has been at the district level since 1991, and I... It's the same year that I came, so we have worked together for all of those years. I was trying to add them up in my head. I think that's 16 years. And he's also making sort of a career change in his retirement. They're neither one retiring. Because of his crisis management background and preparedness, he has an opportunity to be in charge of educational training and services for the Olathe Fire Department. And they have been a close partner with us, along with the county and the police department in our crisis management. You saw two schools awarded with the Gold Shield Award. And Bob has led crisis management since the early '90s, far ahead of many of these tragic situations in our nation that have caused people to go in that direction. And he and the work of the district has often been sought out locally, regionally, and at a national level. He will continue in association with us in helping us in some leadership in that area and continuing to serve to represent us and the community on the Governor's Commission for School Safety. So we want to recognize both of those individuals. I just felt like their service to the school district was so significant that I thought that they should be recognized tonight.
years of service of Dr. Bob Drummond. And, Dr. Drummond, we have a Distinguished Service Award to present you tonight, which simply says, "Distinguished Service Award Presented to Dr. Robert Drummond, in recognition of 18 years of outstanding service to the student, staff, and community from 1989 to
recognized tonight. Now, time for public comments.
2007, and excellent leadership as President of the Board of Education from '94 to '95, '95 to '96, 2000 to 2001, and 2005 to 2006."
At each regular meeting, the board reserves limited time for individuals to address the
And this is our last regular scheduled business meeting for this particular board in this
board.
term and this year, and we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize you one more
We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes.
time and say thank you.
The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit
And I also have the privilege of handing you a lifetime pass to all the district activities,
has expired.
athletic activities.
Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's Educational Access Channel, and audiotape-recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room, which is to my right, and state your name and address, and we ask that you please come through the center aisle and to the podium here on my right. We have one person who has signed up in advance to speak tonight. That's Mr. Jack Laptead. Welcome, Mr. Laptead.
Well, as a lifetime Olathe resident and a product of the Olathe Schools, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'll use these because I want to keep within my five minutes here. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank each of you for your incredible commitment and service to our schools and our children here in Olathe, as you serve on this board. I truly believe each of you is committed to the betterment of our schools and our children. With that said, I must say that I am extremely disappointed in how you've conducted yourselves over the course of this past year, and most notably, the recent actions you took in regards to the upcoming bond issues and grade reconfiguration. I am not at all proud of the example you've set for our children and the lack of honesty and transparency you have exhibited in voting the way you did and by acting in such a way that implies you believe that the ends justify the means. Mr. Rounds's editorial on May 15 was very well-written and expresses the disgust and dismay many of your patrons now feel. I have been close enough to this process over the last two years to understand that grade reconfiguration was a foregone conclusion in the minds of the administration from the beginning, and was clearly communicated across the district as the party line. If that was not the case, then why did you not hear any public opposition from teachers or coaches? Surely, they can't all support this. Many of the tactics employed by the administration were straight from the corporate playbooks on culture change. You, as a board, were going to hear exactly what they wanted you to hear. But to your credit, I thought you went one step further and commissioned an outside organization to conduct a survey. Why, then, do you refuse to accept the results of that survey and then act on those results in such a way as to make it meaningful? Don't ask our opinions and then ignore it. Don't waste our tax dollars on something you place on a shelf or you use to strategize against us. And finally, don't move forward on an issue that the patrons of this district clearly do not want. Let me remind you of your own survey results. Eighty-six percent of respondents rated the overall quality of the district as excellent or good. Seventy-two percent of respondents are satisfied with the current configuration. Please do not tell us that we only need to be educated on this issue, when your own survey results reveal that 79% of respondents are already familiar with this issue and are not uninformed. How much money, time, and taxpayer resources have already been spent in the propaganda campaign, only for your survey to reveal that there are barely one-third of your patrons who are in favor of this reconfiguration? We may not be members of the educational elite, but we are intelligent and loving parents who want what's best for our children. How much clearer can it be said, "We do not want this change"? Your own independent data supports this. Speaking of data, it was my understanding that this process was going to be data-driven, but to date, I have seen very little hard data to support this change. Requests are ignored, administration-led focus groups are formed, or platitudes are given. It has always been my impression that we are a district that is consistently ranked in the upper echelons of districts, not only in our state, but in the nation. Have you been lying to us all these years, or are we not a district that others across this country aspire to? Has our current configuration not brought us levels of achievement that many others only envy? Nothing that I can see makes me think that this level of achievement cannot continue with the configuration we now have. The title of the guest column on May 10 was "It's Up to the Voters." If that is true, and you refuse to accept the results of your own survey, then why not put it to a question on this year's ballot? No money attached, just simply, do you support moving sixth-grade students to junior high? Do you support moving ninth-grade students to senior high? With one simple vote, you will know where the people you are supposed to represent stand on this issue. If they say yes, push the administration forward with their plans to prepare for implementation. But if they say no, as your own survey indicates they will, then scrap the plan for good, save our money and valuable resources, and put them to use educating our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Laptead. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the board? Okay, we'll consider the public comments section closed, and we'll move on to our consent agenda, which is Section 5 of our agenda. Board members, I want to remind you that section... Item 5.14 has been removed from the consent agenda for later consideration in the meeting. Are there any items of question or discussion on any of the consent agenda items?
I think we probably do need to discuss both of them. It might be beneficial to have some dialogue, in my mind, around 5.13, knowing that we're going to have some additional discussion. So, Mr. Gilmore, if you deem that to be appropriate, I'd like to have some brief discussion on 5.13. And also, I have a question on 5.16.
Okay. Are you... Mr. Churchman, you wanted to have 5.13 pulled along with 5.14 to consider both of those separately, or do you want to just discuss 5.13 by itself?
I have a specific question about 5.13, but then I think the general discussion that we're going to have later will apply to both. And so, the question around 5.13...
Excuse me. In regards to 5.13, I need to recuse myself from that discussion, as I have in the past, for possible conflict of interest.
Okay. Well, with that in mind, Mr. Churchman, why don't we wait on that issue for later in the meeting, and that way, Mr. Parker can remain for the remainder of this discussion. We'll bring those both back, if that's okay?
That's fine.
All right. So, Mr. Parker, go ahead and stay for now, and we'll look at those items after the executive session. Any other items we have a question on or need to be further informed about?
Just a brief question on 5.16. And I don't know, Mr. Deener, if you're the proper answer on this, but I'm just curious as to what the funding authority is for the costs associated with this. What category will that come out of?
The one-time cost, the $24,692 and the $12,346, which are one-time costs, sometimes referred to as connection fees, those are budgeted in the construction cost for Woodland Elementary School. The annual fee would be a question for Mr. Deener. The annual fee that we would have to pay would not come from that fund.
So then, the one-time fees are bond-related?
They've always been considered a part of the construction cost of the project. Any sort of tap fees or connection fees have been paid for out of the bond funds for that particular project.
And these fees are in line with what you budgeted and expected?
Yes, they are.
And so, here it says "estimated." What is the opportunity that these fees could be higher than what we're showing here?
There is a small chance that they could be. These are the estimated fees based upon the drawings we've submitted. It's my understanding from the civil engineer that, in a final calculation, will be made once the building is constructed. The only real chance that I understand for the fees to change would be if we built something different than what we submitted.
So these fees then are fairly customary, is that correct?
Yes, they are.
And our history has been that they've pretty much been in line with the estimate?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Then, Mr. Deener, if you don't know the answer this evening, maybe you could research the one-time or the yearly cost as to just where we categorize that in our budget?
I sure can. I'm just not familiar with this particular agenda item, so I'll take a look at that, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
I realize that the applicant on that 5.13 is Empire LLC, is that correct? Is that... That's a developer?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Then I do not have a conflict of interest on that.
Then, let's move to Mr. Churchman's question, then.
Just would like an explanation as to the option that we have to either, in the event of approving this, pay in an upfront fee or payment over a 10-year term. And, Mr. Deener, if you need to research that, I'd just...
I need... Yes, I'm not familiar with these agenda items. They don't normally come out of my area, but the questions you're having may very appropriately be answered by issues that we deal with. I'm just not familiar with these topics right here.
Okay. So, the question that I have is just, is there an advantage to the one-time fee financially, or is there a disadvantage to the 10-year payment? What would be the most financially advantageous to us? So, Steph needs to do some research on that. I would like to just know that from a fundamental point of view.
Okay. If we're talking about a special benefit that comes from the district, from the city or the county, typically, what they are going to do is they're going to give us an opportunity to make an assessment that comes from our Special Assessment Fund, which is one of our six levy funds. And typically, at the point in time when that... When the construction project is completed, they will come to us with the actual cost and give us an opportunity of making a one-time payment or carry that over a 10-year period. Typically, we have gone with, if it's a small enough amount, let's say, under $60,000, $80,000, and if we have available cash balances in the Special Assessment Fund, we will make that one-time payment. If, on the other hand, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I remind the board that you have one time of year at which we can take information to the county and assess a levy for the ongoing fees. And so, depending upon when that... The knowledge of that fee is, like, if we became aware of that right now, that we could pay it in a one-time, and it wasn't due until, let's say, September, that would give us an opportunity to work with the board to increase the special assessment, to make that one-time payment with levies that were going to be received in the next fiscal year. On the other hand, if the one-time payment opportunity was up within 30 days and we had to make that payment and that decision over the next 30 days, we probably would not have the cash balances in the Special Assessment Fund to make that decision, and therefore, because we had to respond within 30 days, our only alternative would be to say, "We go for the 10-year plan."
And does it cost us more to do the 10-year plan, or is it just separated in 10 payments?
Typically, there... No. Typically, then, there is going to be some interest involved with that, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other items for questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, except Item 5.13 and 5.14. Okay?
I'm sorry, Mr. Parker.
Mr. Parker, do you have a question? Okay.
[inaudible]
Okay?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, except for Items 5.13 and 5.14. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polin?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Section 6 of our agenda, dealing with action on bids, contracts, and agreements. We have a number of items, nine items listed there, related to those. Are there any questions or particular items we need to have clarification on?
Mr. Gilmore, I have some brief questions on 6.04 through 6.09.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Churchman.
For 6.04 through 6.07, and we can answer...
And does it cost us more to do the 10-year plan? Or is it just separated in 10 payments?
Typically, there -- no. Typically, then, there is going to be some interest involved with that, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other items for questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda except item 5.13 and 5.14. Okay?
I would move to--
Mr. Parker, do you have a question? Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda as listed with exceptions that we have mentioned.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented except for items 5.13 and 5.14. Okay. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Section 6 of our agenda dealing with action on bids, contracts, and agreements. We have a number of items, nine items listed there related to those. Are there any questions or particular items we need to have clarification on?
Mr. Gilmore, I have some brief questions on 6.04 through 6.09.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Churchman.
For 6.04 through 6.07, and we can answer these individually, just like affirmation as to what the budget category is that the funding will be coming from? And also, just confirmation as to how much was budgeted for these items?
6.04, communications cabling, is a portion of the construction of the building. That came from bond funds for the construction of the building. And we had budgeted the construction manager's estimate, which was $73,952.
Thank you.
was budgeted from capital outlay. And our budget for that was the architect's estimate, $152,839.
Thank you.
6 was also from bond funds. Budgeted amount, $210,974. And I don't have the information for 6.07 in front of me right now. We're asking that you reject those bids, but that's also bond funds for the construction of Woodland Elementary.
So, as we go forward with that approval, whenever that comes back, if we could have that kind of information, that would be helpful.
We'll give you a summary that has the construction manager's estimate for that also.
Very good. Thank you.
Greg, just curious, what happened to those specifications? We've been doing this a long time. What happened to the specifications that allowed bidders to bid something else?
This was a different roof than we had used before. It is not our standard roof that we've been doing for several years. And we had an ASTM number, which you may be familiar with. That is American Society for Testing Materials, which has sort of established a standard that -- that ASTM represented one kind of roof. The written description represented another kind of roof. So, it depended on whether you bid the ASTM number or the written description as to which roof you were bidding. We felt that was enough of confusion that we just need to reject the bids, clarify the specifications, and rebid.
Was that a different type of roof from Madison Place?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Churchman, you also had 6.08 and .09.
Yes. Simply wanted to know how much we budgeted for those individual items.
Okay. For the photo ID printers, we had budgeted $50,000. This is actually a different printer than we had originally considered purchasing. This is a newer printer, and so that's why the cost is a little bit less on those photo ID printers. On the high school commons digital presentation equipment, we had to estimate on that because we weren't positive exactly what all would be needed to configure and fit those rooms. We estimated between $150,000 and $175,000. And as you can see, it came in under that. So, and both of those are coming out of capital outlay for '07.
Good. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Ms. Ashley?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to comment on 6.03 in regard to the RFP for banking services. I wanted to acknowledge and recognize Randy Otting for the considerable amount of organizational effort he put into assembling this data and putting it in such an easy-to-read fashion as you're seeing it this evening. The decision, or the recommendation, I should say, is being made that we maintain our banking services contract with First National Bank of Kansas. And it might appear at first blush that that was the easy thing to do, but I can assure you, there was a lot of background work that Randy did, as well as interviews with five different banks. The district staff has expressed to the board their satisfaction with our current level of services with First National Bank of Kansas. And for that reason, and based on the bids being very close as far as the relative cost, we have made the recommendation to stick with the bank. I did want to comment that in the course of these interviews, though, we have identified some other financial services opportunities that we would like to explore in the future, and we'll be bringing back probably some of those recommendations. I don't know what the timeline would be for that, but we have identified some other opportunities. So, just wanted to acknowledge Randy's efforts and say thank you.
And also, thanks to you and Mr. Churchman for assisting in that process. We really appreciate that service. Mr. Parker?
I'd like Mr. Charlesworth to come up and give us an overview of our insurance bid for this year. Looks very favorable, increase in coverage, no increase in deductible and actually decrease in premiums. So, maybe just give us the highlights of that.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I think you just said the highlights. Stole all my thunder. Actually, this process started several months ago, working with Merle Hastert and your broker, Thomas McGee. And we had some options that we wanted to look at. We knew the marketplace as far as the insurance premiums were fairly soft this time. We had some indications, and we asked them to probe other possible alternatives for us to consider. Bottom line is that the renewals came back extremely competitive. The property premium dropped dramatically. From that drop, it's like we have done over the years, if you've -- those have seen me long enough, I guess. We've tried incrementally to modify your program better, larger, more concrete, a little bit larger deductibles or retentions. And we're trying to continue to fine-tune this as the district grows. Bottom line is, is what you have laid out in front of you is we have the property liability program. We have a self-funded workers' compensation program. We have a third-party administrator that administers these liability claims, as well as workers' compensation claims. And we've tried to roll that all together in one recommendation, if you will. And you save some money, and we want you to perhaps use some of those dollars for a little bit higher liability limits this time. And we still have a little bit more work to do. There's a few items that we need to visit with management, as well as legal counsel on. And we'll have that done probably in the next month or two, and you'll be involved in that as well. But I'm very pleased with what we've seen. And incrementally, we've made good strides, and incrementally, we continue to grow and refine this program.
I noticed that we have increased our liability coverage for the district. And then also, could you speak to the Kansas tort reform? And how does the $500,000 limit in that regard, and how does that affect us? And how will that affect us in the future?
That's specifically one of the items we're going to be talking about with hopefully yourself and maybe another board member and legal counsel. The Kansas Tort Claim Act is designed for municipalities and school districts and all public entities in the state of Kansas. And essentially says, the most the public entity can lose in any one occurrence is $500,000. That's as per a tort issue. And that's fine. Most issues that we would see would be within that limit, and most incidents are usually under that amount. But we also have risk outside of the state, where the Kansas tort law does not apply, use of autos, and also, the law, the tort act, does not apply to issues in federal court. This is my understanding. And so, therefore, we're looking at issues that maybe we ought to look at some higher limits. And we thought with the savings this year, we might consider moving that way. The endorsement is still in the policy. That was a board decision years ago. But it's something that we want to continue to evaluate. And again, that's one of those steps we want to continue to grow and talk about. And that way, it's a policy decision of the board. But we thought with the premiums that we're saving on the property end, let's take that next step now and use some of those dollars that we've saved and increase the limits that we do have available.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Charlesworth.
You're right.
Any other items for clarification or question? If not, we'll entertain a motion for approval of these 6.01 through 6.09.
I'd move to approve bids, contracts, and agreements as listed.
A second.
And that motion should include the rejection of the 6.07?
To include -- and that motion would include the rejection of 6.07.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further questions? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Agenda item 7.01, dealing with setting the special meeting date and time for our end-of-year meeting. We've suggested Thursday, June 28th at 5:00 PM. Is that -- I believe that date's fine with everyone. Is that time appropriate for everyone?
Mr. Gilmore, I would ask for consideration of the board for 6:00 PM on that day.
Okay. Any objection to that? I think that would probably work for everyone. Ms. Ashley indicated she will be gone. Dr. Drummond?
I'll be gone.
Uh-oh. We're going to have to start counting noses here. Is Mrs. Wilhelm going to be here, do we know, on the 28th?
I don't know.
Okay.
I would be here on Wednesday.
Which is the 27th.
I'm just checking with Mr. Deener, and he's saying that's okay. This is year-end and closing, so we have to keep this in tune with their finalizing, but Wednesday would be fine, he said.
We could even do Tuesday. Tuesday, we're pushing it, pushing it, but not Monday.
Okay. Does Tuesday, the 27th, work with everyone? Dr. Drummond, does that affect you at all?
Tuesday, the 27th?
Yes. Or Wednesday, I'm sorry, the 27th.
I can't do Wednesday. You have another board meeting.
Okay. But you can do the Wednesday. All right. Sounds like we would definitely have a quorum, then. All right. And 6:00 PM? So, we'll need a motion to that effect, please.
I move that we set a special meeting date for Wednesday, June 27th at 6:00 PM.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. And that motion carries.
We did say 6 o'clock?
6:00 PM, yes. Uh-huh. Next item relates to the change of date for our regular July meeting. We've suggested July 19th. We understand there are some conflicts with that date for some of us. Who has a conflict with that date? I think Mrs. Wilhelm does, but--
I do. I'll be -- I leave the 18th, and we'll be gone the rest of the week.
Okay. Would another date work for us early? So, you'll be here on the 17th? So, I guess, because there's a question, can we meet other than -- that's a Thursday, which we've typically tried to meet on, but can we meet on a different date than that, like the 17th? I don't see anybody objecting to that. That might work.
Tuesday, the 17th.
Tuesday, the 17th. And Mr. Churchman, would a 6:00 PM work better for you than a 5:30?
It would. Thank you.
Does that work? I think that works.
However, that's a regular meeting. So, you know, I'll accommodate the 5:30 on the regular meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Dr. All, that date seemed to work, as far as you know, for staff and everything we need to do?
I think it's--
Mr. Deener shaking his head.
Again, we're in the budget times, and so I think that works. That week is a good week for our business department.
All right. So, we're looking to entertain a motion for the -- set this meeting on Tuesday, July 17th at 5:30 PM.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Polan. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
I should have seen.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And that motion carries. On our future action items -- it's not even 11 o'clock, and I'm already not talking right. Number of items under Section 8 and information items under Section 9. Is there any one of those items, board members, you wish to have staff investigate further or answer questions about today?
Mr. Gilmore, I have a request on 8.02.
Go ahead, Mr. Churchman.
Mr. Deener, there's a document that you've given us titled "Year-End Accounting Adjustments to Beat Budget Goals." And I'd like to request some additional narrative be provided to the board on the various categories that are listed there, just to make sure that we understand those. So, if you could do that prior to the meeting where we have to address this, that'd be
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Is there anything else? Anything under Section 9? If not, we have a number of items that we need to discuss in executive session, and Dr. All and I have estimated 60 minutes for executive session. If someone will make the motion that's outlined in our agenda, that we would look like we would -- we probably would be wise to say 9 o'clock, would be my guess.
I would move to discuss executive session, consult attorney on matters of the internal and return to client relationship, protect attorney-client privilege in the public interest, and to discuss matters relating to employer-employee negotiations, protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position in the public interest, and to for preliminary discussion relating to the acquisition of real property, protect the public interest in obtaining the property, and to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel to protect the privacy interests of individuals to be discussed, to return to regular session at 9:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Drummond and Mr. Churchman, any discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
And we're adjourned to executive session. Okay. Mrs. Carpenter, let the record reflect. We've returned from executive session back into regular session. We have a couple of items, action items, for consideration, first being we had pulled item number 5.13 and 5.14 from the consent agenda that related to benefit district petitions. And I would ask to entertain a motion to approve those items as presented, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Drummond. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Polan. Any further discussion on the motion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Last item of business we have tonight is an action related to some compensation issues. And, Mr. Churchman, I believe you have a motion you'd like to make.
Mr. Gilmore, I'd like to move that we approve compensation for administrators equalling 3.85 percent and classified staff equalling 4 percent, as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
And that motion carries. And with that, Dr. All, would you care to make a few comments related to negotiations and so forth?
Yes. I want to make it clear that the teachers' salaries, teachers' license, and certified staff salaries will be acted upon by the board at the August regular meeting. The reason for that at that time is that there's a two-step process for the certified licensed staff, and that is both board action and teacher ratification of the agreement, which is required by law.